All members are present. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Could I have a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signal a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Personnel, Mr. Collette?
Yes ma'am. So if you remember last time, I said everything was looking great and at the same time we had a sporadic burst of resignations. These are those resignations. We have those posted and processed at this time, trying to get things filled as quickly as possible. But on a positive note, you know the next page, we had seven professional hires, three service. We also then had three substitutes that we've hired and a coach, actually, and then some ticket takers. And we did hire a student council advisor for the high school. And then finally transfers, we did have a principal transfer. And you can see the other areas in which we had three professionals, three service transfers. And on a positive light, we did have some information down there at the bottom concerning maternity leave and F M L A.
So. So as I'm reading it sir, we have principals in place at every school?
Yes ma'am.
Ready to roll?
We do at this time.
We were fortunate in that we were able to bring onboard for the beginning of the Principals Academy last Monday, a person that was coming to us from out of county.
Yes.
So they were able to participate in the whole three days.
That is ideal. So how many positions do we still have unfilled, Mr. Collette?
It will, it reduces and moves each day. It is approximately around 20.
Okay.
We're trying to reduce that. We have a whole new round of postings to go up tomorrow following this meeting. So we're frantically trying to get those filled as quickly as we can.
I am asking that question, Mr. Collette, because there have been some wild rumors in the community that we are 80 positions down and 50 positions down.
No.
And that other counties are completely filled, which I know is not true.
Not true.
That is why I asked that question, not to put you on the spot. That way I can return to them and say.
Yeah, we, our numbers are very similar to just about every other county in our position. We are not abnormally below numbers. We are definitely not full either. The reality is that there are not as many young people going into the teaching profession. We even looked at, you know, we looked to the college for some help and there aren't any to pull out of class really for the fall. So we're just, we're waiting. The next round, the next class appears to be somewhat positive. We have, we just added, I think it was what 10 or 11 observations. I mean students that are probably in their second or third year of the education program at Wesleyan. So there are a bunch of kids at a younger stage coming through. We do have two student teachers. So we're looking at being able to work with them, but the likelihood of them sticking around in our county is not very high. Only because they're from far away. Yes.
And so the other thing too is today, I did have a conversation with Barbara Owens from Fairmont State University. We are going to enter the same CTR agreement like what we do with West Virginia Wesleyan because she does have some students that are from this area that may want to, you know, invest in that CTR program. So we're going to go ahead and get that approved. We have to approve it through the state, then it comes back, then you all approve it. Which is, it's very good.
It is.
Another thing that, that, I don't know that it's advertised enough, but, but people with certain four-year degrees can come in here and we can help get them into, into a first-class permit and then help get them where they need to be to be able to turn that into their actual teaching license. So that's, it's been advertised, but I don't think it's been widely talked about. But we're helping several people go that route this year because they're coming in with different experiences that, that meet the need that we have, particularly in some content areas. It's very helpful. And they can do an online masters in teaching program and they can do that through Fairmont State. And I believe Glenville has one as well. And we have an agreement with Glenville. We don't have a CTR agreement, but that's okay. We can put people on first-class permit. They come in with zero years' experience with that BA and they can, they can start working right away. So.
Are we doing anything to reach out to our recent retirees?
Well, so.
Sorry, I've got a lot of questions.
You're fine. No, you're fine. So I did just send to the state today our critical needs subs policies. They have to be approved by the state first. I sent for bus drivers and I also sent for our teaching. And, and I have every area listed. I mean, I left nothing out because we are in desperate need of, of filling these positions. So once those are approved, those folks can be day-to-day subs. We have to continue to post those positions and then we can put them in once that is approved by the state. That will be approved. and then we can put them in once that is approved by the state. That will be approved at their September state board meeting. So we're making progress there.
I'm glad you asked that question because the same thing's been happening to me. Oh, there's sixty-four, sixty-four is the number I got.
Oh, yeah. Outrageous numbers that I said, even on one, to one person, I said, if you look on Facebook, it's coming up with what jobs are posted. Why don't you count how many there are and don't count coaching positions.
That's the problem. They, between coaching positions.
Service personnel.
Service personnel positions and things like, like, like we said, the student council, extracurricular positions. They count all of those and it could be as many as sixty. That doesn't mean instructional positions.
Well, and they were like, maybe we're gonna have to start school half a day. I heard that. That was a good one.
That was a rumor. We're not gonna be able to start school because we don't have Rogers Circle.
Half a day and then you have a group that have a day and then we have to remove teacher. It's been crazy. So you have to dispel those, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I wish my Buchanan was here so that they could.
I'll talk to Katie. And also, and also talk to Noah. Right, because. He, he, he will actually be here on Friday because on Friday we're doing the first ever new employees orientation. They will be here all day. We have, we've been fortunate because the W V E A is going to provide the breakfast for them that day. We have A F T providing lunch and the West Virginia Professional Educators are going to provide an afternoon snack. Kimberly Mitchell will also be here for the School Service Personnel Organization. And we're going to give all of them time to talk to those new employees about what each of their organizations can offer and what it would cost if they would choose to be a member. We're going to go over all kinds of things with them. In order for us to retain employees, we have to do a better job of onboarding them and working with them throughout the year. So the first three to five years are the most crucial in order to be able to retain those employees. This is a great place to live, a great place to raise a family. But if they don't feel that they are a valued member of the educational community as an employee, they do not stay. And that's everywhere. That's everywhere. But we, we in particular here have to do a much better job in that area and not continue to chase folks off.
What about mentor positions?
So the mentor positions, there are probably.
There's several. I can't give you an exact number.
Because several of our employees who may even be entering their third year were never offered the opportunity to participate in the mentorship.
I know that because I used to be the person that took care of that.
So there's probably about thirty. We are maintaining a list. We checked with the department to make sure that they did, if they came from another county, that they had not already completed it. So we're, we're getting, we're getting that rolling too. And of course, our administrators, we have several who are brand new. So they will have to have a mentor or we even have some that did not receive a mentor when they should have.
As a teacher.
Oh, no, as a principal. Because you have to have a mentor even as a principal. So several of them had not received that either. So we are, we, we're.
I hope we can post for mentor positions early on because I hate to see people get mentors. The first time they see the mentor, it's already October and they've already used up all of their codes on the copier and they've parked in the principal's spot four times and you know that deal.
So we should post those next Wednesday.
Yes.
Good.
We should post those next Wednesday.
That's the plan.
Good. I'm sorry for all the questions.
No, it's fine. There are good questions and there are things that you do need to know.
Work session, board goals?
Okay, I did put in front of you, just so you have everything right there, another copy of the results of, of the assessment, that self-assessment that was, that took place.
On that, it is still saying that we are not, it's still showing that we are not.
Yes, we are. Matt put it on.
Okay.
Matt, Matt put it on and they affirm that they do, they do see it.
I just wanted to make sure.
Once we get the board site completely finished, it will be front-facing on, when you click on the board page. It'll be front-facing. The results plus your goals will be there too, once we establish those. So we have, we've met the deadline that is that the board, the state puts before us.
Jim Brown.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it is actually in policy twenty-three, twenty-two that we have to have it done.
Jim Brown's the one that keeps putting out that chart.
He does. So I did, I did also give you some ideas of goals that some other boards have put together just to kind of give you some language that some of them have used, how did they go about this. I can tell you that, whoops, you will see that some of them use, you know, more goals than you can shake a stick at and others are very focused on what it is that, you know, they want to do to support their school system. You know, the first one are six goals, the second one's three, there on the page that I gave you. And then the next one is four. And then as you can see, McDowell County has two, achievement and safe learning environments. So the results here of the self-assessment that was completed, you know, it, you all will complete this again next August. While this is good for you all to know, I'm not sure that the results from here should guide what you all want to do as you move forward. But just giving you some ideas, you know, at least of what those results were. So we can just, however you wanna, to, to take, if you all brought examples or what have you.
I think we need to say, this is very difficult to complete because we're under state takeover.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And, and I mean, it, the wording on some of them.
It does not apply.
It does not apply.
Yes, yes, yes. You're absolutely correct.
Does not apply.
Yes.
And I will say this, if we get a chance, because I know we've got that September thing with Jim Brown. I am pushing him very hard to have a training for board members that is a planned training that is already ready. So the minute you are taken over, the board members can do a one-hour training on what their responsibilities are, what their rights are and how it affects things like this that they don't think about. So.
Correct.
All right. This is Wayne.
And that's just wording to get you started. So if there's, if there was a particular area that you're thinking.
One of the areas I was thinking about, I'm not sure how to add the wording or do the wording, but as it relates to the state intervention, working with, you know, local administration as well as the department, like honor before June twenty-twenty-five, I see little or no reason why the local board couldn't be in charge of finance and personnel. My reasoning for that is personnel is, you can't do anything unless the superintendent makes the recommendation, the local board.
The reason we did that is because that's why we're in trouble, finances and personnel. So the state took it over.
I understand. I understand that, but the superintendent has to make that recommendation for personnel. And it's up to board members then, if you have questions, to question that. Finance, financial is if the safeguards are in place, the guardrails as I call them. If they're in place and being followed, then it's just a matter of the superintendent and the staff and the board making sure everybody knows those guidelines and are following them. Now, I understand curriculum, you know, contact instruction, that takes a longer period to track the outcomes. You know, but it's, my thinking is it's a much shorter period for financial and personnel. And, and also my understanding in previous interventions, there's been a step approach. You know, you just don't throw a switch, you're back in total control. And we would be monitored during that process and should be as it relates to that. But I don't understand, you know, another basically year, honor before June twenty-twenty-five, why we could not have that. If someone needs to tell me why that could not happen within the next eleven months.
Right. So to give you some context, just last week, was it Wednesday? At four o'clock, Steve and I got that email. Last Wednesday at four o'clock, we received an email from the department. And they, they had not shared with us before that there was a document that we were to be loading. Information, examples of how have we addressed the issues that are identified in the, in the report. We did not know that, that that existed and I had till Friday to get it all in. It was, it was okay because I, I was done Thursday. When you, when you keep things on your computer, it's easy to load things in. But it became very apparent as I was entering things, what they have, what they perceive as progress and what we perceive as progress are, are different. But because I was able to load some things in that they had not thought about, they are currently looking over those things as well because the state board had asked if they could see some kind of a planner that demonstrates where we can load evidence in, that demonstrates what kind of progress are we making towards those goals. So with, I'll start with personnel first. So the reason personnel was such an issue was because we had a lot of people that were being hired, that certification wasn't being checked. They were being placed in positions that they did not qualify for. They were being paid incorrect salaries. There, there were no contracts. There had, there hadn't been any, some of them hadn't, there hadn't been any, back to when Mr. Wager had stepped out of the superintendency, there had been none. There also was the concern around looking at master schedules and were personnel being utilized as they, as they're supposed to be. So the first step we took was we went through a complete certification check of everybody that was listed on a master schedule. Well, when that came about, what was discovered was there were an awful lot of people listed there that had either retired or were no longer serving as, as instructional personnel in our system. So that was a big, a big initial cleanup there. So what's happening now, when you see these, there is a person in certification that checks through everything and works with Kelsey and then we have so many days to get it corrected or crank it off until, you know, the next meeting. I, I think in, in that area, there is still, there's still. Yeah, there is still room for improvement. I don't know if, I don't know if in a year they would feel that the improvement is made to where they feel maybe perhaps some of that could come back to the county or not. It's, it's, it's a, it's a push-pull. And I was surprised that, at getting that and then it's like, but we, I was surprised when I started loading things in, really a lot of the progress that we've made that they didn't even have in there yet.
Well, like personnel, whether it's the department approving it or a local board approving it, all that work should have been done already. I mean, I don't know what the state department's checking in that regard when you send your personnel list down there. You know, put a simple checklist or requirements and initial who did it and include that in the personnel packet with everybody. I know that increases paper. But then the local board or whoever, you know, they're at least checking those things and making sure, you know, we have certifications, we have people filling out the right paperwork.
But see, that wasn't done.
I, I know it wasn't.
That wasn't done. So now we gotta prove ourselves. We gotta prove ourselves. This is a new board and they've gotta be able to trust us. And right now, there is no trust there.
Oh, I know.
There is no trust.
Well, the finances too, don't forget, that's still in federal investigation. You have all of those steps of it and love and, and grant money and federal money. And they, they, that hasn't even been finished yet. That investigation hasn't, I mean.
We don't even know if there is an investigation.
Well, there's.
Yeah, there's an investigation.
There is an investigation.
I got anything, so I know.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I, I understand there's, you know, an interview, but whether it will continue. But again, we can't change history. We have to change from here forward. And if we have the guardrails in place, you know, yes, someone may have done something possibly allegedly incorrect in the past. Don't know and frankly, can't change that.
No, but we can learn from that.
You can learn from it. Yes, I agree.
But we must have this stuff in place and we don't. Yeah, I think you're going at it in a backwards way. You're wanting to say, our goal is that we're gonna do this. We don't say when the state takes us off of.
No, what I'm saying is we work towards it in a team effort with the superintendent and staff and, you know, whether it be the department, what steps do we need to accomplish as a system? Whether it's loading information, you know, we've done this, but they didn't know we've done this. It's not, you know, that we have to provide evidence and what evidence, you know, what steps do we need to take? In personnel and finance, just picking those. What steps do we need to take to, to do that?
State says what the steps are for us.
Okay, then we need to communicate it. We need those communicated, communicated to us.
No, we don't.
Sure we do.
No.
Because we have no say.
We have no say in this.
I understand you have no authority and control, but you can have inputs and questions.
And we get a monthly statement from the finance department in our agenda. And I know when, even be, when I was superintendent and when Jane and I and Sherry came on, we would every month say, what is, why are we spending a hundred and nine thousand dollars on this?
Yeah, well, and I do appreciate that the, the new way, it gives us at least some idea what it was because I know I asked on Mason and something.
Mason and Mary.
Mason and Mary I asked on every month because I couldn't remember what they were.
Right, right. And I think, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. And I think the thing, the important piece also to keep in, in perspective is Sarah, bless her heart because she stepped into a horrible situation. She, she is, she is going to receive a mentor that she's going to have for three years. They've never done anything like that. So that's something that we're working on. We finally have been able to, to hire a full complement back into the finance department. The next person starts on Monday. But it's, the state is going to be looking for pervasive implementation of all of those guardrails. And I can tell you, just from my chair, when I see P O's come across my desk, contracts come across my desk, agreements, M O U's, anything that comes across my desk. And I will send them to the department because of course they have to approve all this stuff. And I'll say, I, I need to call your attention to section whatever, whatever. I don't believe that language is legal. I don't believe that we can agree to this. And then we just find out that there's an additional vendor sheet that now has to be added to everybody that we have to do. They just told everybody that this summer. So while we're still sending things there, know that I'm sitting here and most of the time I've, I've got that chart of accounts sitting right here so that when putting P O's together, I'm going, okay, yes, that fits into this, but I don't believe that that matches that function code and object code. And I go back and say, hmm, where are we making this? You know, so here's the thing. I don't know who comes after me is going to have that level of knowledge. So it is, it's going, it's going to take us probably, I would say, two to three years to get everybody in the system to be following that financial code to the, to the level that the state would expect. Again, now that I know that that planner thing exists, I can go in there monthly and I can load things in to show progress for each of those areas that were identified in the original long-form takeover. Knowing that perhaps this might come up as a conversation, I don't think it's inappropriate to make a goal to strive for progress, you know, by the end of twenty-twenty-five, by the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. The wording is what's got me caught up.
I don't know how to word it.
How do, how do we word, you know, perhaps one of the, it could just simply be to continue to work on the identified areas. You know, that put us into state, I'm, I'm, to wordsmith it. You know, and then of course, because that progress now that that planner's together, that will be shared monthly then with the state and then they can come back and ask questions, you know, and those kinds of things where before I was sending sometimes seven pages of updates to them, but I felt like it was just there.
Quick question. So, so the feds have their investigation, okay? Honestly, it's such a cluster that I wouldn't want to have this board right now be responsible for all of that because I know what I turned into, just me and not let alone what everybody else found afterwards. And we don't know what, I mean, we can do, you can do steps like you're saying, like this to correct what you know, but you can't correct what you don't know. And we don't know yet.
And they put out, initially put out the concerns at the state board meeting because, I mean, I. Because I mean, I listened to that and all that. And, but as far as their concerns financially.
You're talking about millions of dollars of federal monies.
All I know is we had to pay them back money.
Grant monies and this money.
And we don't even know.
I understand.
And we don't even know how much that's even gonna be. So we, how, how do you correct something that they haven't given you the information yet of what all it is yet?
That has to be done.
That has to be done. That's the, that's the other.
You know, the local administration working with the department should know the guidelines and guardrails of the correct procedures for spending.
Well, yeah, I agree with that.
I mean.
I agree with that.
They have to know that. And anything in the past is unlikely to change unless they, the state department, the state board comes up with a new policy as a result of whatever investigations. You know, I don't understand why the board would not push and work with and push for local control coming back.
We're not ready for that.
I'm not.
But that should be our goal.
I'm not saying total control. I'm just looking at personnel and finance at this. I mean, I, I think, I look at it completely different evidently from my background and experience in the private business situations. Worldwide company that I was with and for 15 years and then 30 years of local government experience. I, I don't, I don't see why, at least it would not be a goal, on or before June 25th to, you know, however we need to wordsmith that, to be making progress. And to achieve those, those areas or other areas, you know, whichever. For, you know, the local board step, stepping back in an area at a time for that. I, I mean, I, I just don't understand why that would not be.
I don't think, I think when a state that takes over a county, they take.
Over.
Oh. And they decide, not us, we, we can.
And you're ready.
Complain all we want.
Yeah.
But we have no say when they're gonna give it back to us.
So I have a, I'm a suggestion.
They're, they're even waiting for the federal investigation.
I'm not saying complain. I'm saying working in conjunction with, you know, their superintendent they put in place and the local administration and their representatives. What can we do? What do we need to do? What can we do as a local board to accomplish this?
So I have, I wordsmithed something here that, that might meet that. So I said by the end of 2020, I, I should put FY. By the end of FY 2025, the Upshur County Board of Education will work with local and state authorities to continue the process of regaining local control of, local control of personnel and finances.
Yeah, I, I would, I'm just looking at those areas as shorter term.
And we're saying we're working towards that.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not saying that we would regain, but at least, at least it demonstrates that we understand that we have work to do to work towards that, the regaining of that authority.
That works for me.
And we may need to wordsmith it around somewhere.
Let, let's look at what has been taken from us. Personnel.
Look, I'll go, let me go get the report. That will, that might help even more.
Okay. Because I mean, like, when you look at the sale of property, how often do we sell property? That's one of the things that's been taken from us.
Do we still own central school?
No.
No, that was.
Wesleyan, that was it.
Does Wesleyan own that or?
But, and then I saw on a report that said that we hadn't gone and checked on our properties that we own in the county. George Carver and I rode around Upshur County and found.
Lots.
Property. We didn't even know we had. We went back and found all the deeds. George went through every deed. I can tell you places.
Being done again.
The place in Elmore, it was a turnaround for the buses and where they stored the buses in the winter.
Yes, yes.
And it's still there.
Yes, it is.
We don't, we own it.
Yeah, we used to use it. Yeah, whenever I was a director, we still used that thing.
But there, we drove around, we have deeds going back to the.
So, so focus area one is operation of federal programs. Focus area two is child nutrition. Focus area three was local policies and procedures. Focus area four is personnel and payroll.
This is from the state, right?
This is the actual report. Focus area number five is West Virginia Board of Ed Policy 8200, which is, of course, as we know, procurement. Focus area six was the excess levy call. So those were the six areas that were originally identified. And of course, they number the non-compliances one, one point, you know, 1.1, 1.2, et cetera. So I, I, I think, I think that areas that I loaded in to that planner that may get some of these non-compliances removed. Would, I would say would probably be in the area of child nutrition. And once Anthony shows another year, year and a half of following what needs to as he's, because he's learning and he's done a fabulous job. I think that that's one of those areas of consideration, you know, that could happen right away.
Yeah.
Local policies and procedures.
Is that what the policy, the complete?
Policy manual was about, yes.
Yes.
And so what, and some of these things too that go down through there. Were also identified in the audit that was completed last year by the auditor's office. So there, some of this is gonna take a little bit more time. Because as we know, it's kind of like a habit that we have, you know. If I would drop some of my habits, I could lose weight. I know this, but it takes time. And, and that's the same thing with, it really and truly is the same thing with this.
Can I question that?
Yes.
In this state takeover, we have these six or eight different areas. If we have met compliance with, let's say, the first one. Do they say, okay, you don't have to worry about that anymore? Or does it still, that's what I thought.
No, because.
That was my understanding.
It's clearly states and policy. Yeah, West Virginia Board Policy 2322.
When you have met.
They continue for three years after the state takeover has taken place. And they still monitor and they still offer support in the areas to make sure that you don't fall back.
And I thought that's.
That's a change.
So they can't say, well, your finances are in good shape now, so we're not gonna worry about it.
Yes, yes.
No, they're not gonna say that.
Now, as far as, you know.
In my understanding, in previous, unless it's changed. Because I worked in Gilmore County and was there during their intervention. They received, certain areas came back to the school system. Not, not a hundred percent, not zero or a hundred.
Yes.
Those are not the options. It may be 20% this year, 10% next year, or whatever that calculates to be. So you can get incremental control back.
And if you get control, they just say you're now in compliance.
Yeah.
Which doesn't mean because you're in compliance that you have control. Like the personnel. Kelsey's doing personnel. She is changing that policy and everything. But that does not mean that Upshur County now has control of that. The state's gonna still look at it.
Still look at it, but I, again, my understanding, and then I'll have to talk to somebody to get my underst, my understanding is, yes. Local control can come back to the local board, still with oversight.
Certain areas, you're saying.
In certain areas before total control comes back.
That's true.
Yes, so you can be in charge of personnel before you're in charge of finance. Or finance before personnel. That's how it works. Unless someone tells me different, I mean.
But you're gonna have to show, we're gonna have.
I understand that, yes.
That this is, and that's not gonna happen overnight.
No.
We, we was in a total mess here, total mess. I had no idea, neither did anybody else in this room.
Yeah.
What kind of mess we was in.
Yeah.
And I still don't have a clear idea, the depth of the mess.
And may not.
And it's gonna take a while.
May not for five years or more.
And it's gonna take a while.
Depending on those investigations.
Is there anything on there about achievement? Programs, curriculum, achievement, because I, I get it where you're coming from on the business, but me, I'm coming from teacher retention and programs and achievement for ELA and math.
Yes.
Cutting out with the 700 programs that were bought here and never used or never trained on and just sitting in classrooms in boxes and, you know, so.
We do, we do need to have one that addresses achievement.
We have to have that. That has to be one. And, and even one for special ed that we don't go back to all the non-compliance nonsense over the last four years, five years.
That's worse.
So, you know.
And, and truthfully, those are the three big areas of what goals need to be developed around this. About, about, you know, addressing the non-compliances, addressing achievement and addressing special education. Those really where our goals really need to frame around.
Teacher education, because I don't think, I just don't think that until this whole federal thing, there's so much. It's like she said, it's so deep that it, everything that we reported was just, and, and they even used that statement, the tip of the iceberg. Because you don't know how deep it, it was going because you only knew what you knew. So.
I agree with your statement. And I, that's why, well, I understand what you're saying and I get it.
Right, because that's the business part.
I think right now, we have to prove to the state department that we're willing to put children first.
Yes.
Oh, I agree with that.
Those three goals really do that. Then, once they start having more confidence in us and we continue to make sure we're trying to change and follow the rules in finance, in personnel. All the different areas, you know, food service, all that. Then we, we just continue to, to roll that and the kids are getting better and better as we go.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, that kids first, the instruction, curriculum, all that has to be first.
But I think the work has to be in the pudding. They want to see it, not us tell them we're gonna do it.
That's right.
But more, that's more longer-term outcome, monitoring.
Right. I love this one from Randolph.
I think you can, food service or wherever. You can do those in conjunction with the others in some of the, I'll call them business side of the non-compliance. Should be easier or quicker, I don't know about easier, but quicker monitoring outcomes than the instruction and curriculum and special ed.
I like the West Virginia Department of Education goals. You know, increase school readiness and achievement, expand college readiness, career readiness, workforce readiness and entrepreneurship. And those are the, that's the department's goals. And that covers the whole gamut. But mostly what I've jotted down is focus on student achievement. Build a positive relationship with our staff and our schools. Because if we don't have a positive relationship with our staff and our schools.
And our community.
And our community, that was a net.
That's why I said teacher retention.
Monitor progress using data. So those are things that I jotted down in my spare time.
When does this have to be into the state? Fifteenth or?
Yeah, we have tech approval by the fifteenth.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, we could wordsmith this more if you want to. If you want me to read it again. By the end of FY 2025, the Upshur County Board of Education will work with local and state authorities to continue the process of regaining local control of personnel and finance. Or do we want to say, control of the areas identified?
On the identified deficiency areas.
Yeah, right.
Well, I think that's a big bite with all the areas. Because, you know, we'll work with them, but, you know.
Do we have a copy of the?
And you may, may put an emphasis.
That you were reading from the.
The.
Special circumstances.
Special Circumstances Review. It is, it is online. But do you want me to make you a copy of this before you leave? I'll be, I'll, I'll put my copies of it.
That's probably good, but I would, you know, just in particular, looking at short term, for the short term of, you know, child nutrition or whatever and finance personnel. I mean, because I think those, again, in my mind, can be accomplished at shorter term. Maybe not in a year, but shorter term than some of the instruction related.
Well, the achievement's not gonna be, like you said, but you can still, you can still concentrate and have a short-term goal for program and curriculum.
Yeah.
For it to be implemented and the correct training and the correct mentorship.
Yeah, mentorship.
To keep teacher retention. And that's, that's measurable right away.
Yeah.
The achievement, you're right. We don't know what's gonna happen after the teaching of this year. At the end of the year, what the achievement's gonna be until that happens.
Yeah.
But if you have the correct programs in place and you have, you know, the training in place and you have the implementation of them in place instead of how it was before like this.
Yes.
Well, special ed, every year you've got to do IEPs, so every year you're either in compliance or you're not in compliance.
Right, yes.
You're either doing what you have to do or not doing what you have to do. And I still think that if we have everything else in compliance off of that list. And our achievement is commensurate with, let's say, Louis and Barbara and Randolph. While it may not meet the state criteria, but we are at least back in the ballpark.
Right.
I think the state would return portions of control to us.
It's like comps on a house. You don't do a house over in Connecticut, you do one in your neighborhood. So if we have our tri-county.
Right, yes.
Because achievement is gonna be the hardest one because it's only done once a year. So the minute you don't get it.
Now we're doing, actually now we're doing it four times a year.
Good.
Because we are using the bench, the diagnostic benchmark process.
Good.
And what we, what we determined was while it's great to look at K1, 2, and 3, and, you know, they put that success act in that at grade three, there would be, that's the cut. We felt that it was important to continue to follow them 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So we put those, then we put that in so that we could do that.
Yes.
Here's the caveat. Because the county doesn't have a multi-tier system of support, understanding and professional guidance provided to every employee and has not been for a number of years. It makes it a little bit more difficult. Now, I have, I have seen the test scores. I have not seen the scrub that scores, what they call the scrub scores yet. But I think, I, we did, we did make progress last year. We did make some progress. Small incremental progress is better than a huge jump and then we just level, level off. We do want to see that, that incremental increase. The department is going to have content area groups meeting in ELA and math. And while that addresses at that third grade success act piece. It is still going to have impact in grades 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So that when we're sending our kids on into that high school program, they have a better chance of surviving and being successful because we will have done the work here, 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 all the way through.
Can't put the roof on till you have the foundation.
Exactly. So, and, and that's kind of what we talked about as the county leadership team was this year we gotta put the framework, it, it's gotta be there and we've got to continue to go back to that framework. And we've got to continue to go back to those trainings. So instead of adding additional trainings this year, the math series is new. And, and the way we bid that out, we bid out professional development over a period of time. Not just a one and you're done like we used to get. Because you, if you remember, they used to give us textbooks and say, you know, okay, here's your one day professional development, I'll go teach. So we purposely built in multiple opportunities for professional development for our teachers. So that as they're implementing units of instruction, when they come back that, six weeks later. Let's talk about where you had issues. Now what do we do to change that for this next six weeks, et cetera? So that also goes towards that retention of personnel because then they feel more supported in what they're trying to do in the classroom. The fact that we've got the coaches for all of our administrators. He has already been here, the lead of that. He was here for two of our three days of our academy. He was here yesterday for most of the day and they just came, it was, it was like a revolving door. And they had good conversations yesterday about, so how do we start the year off with our staff? To make them feel valued, to make them feel welcome, to make them feel that they're a part of something bigger. And he really spent the day honing in on those things. So I think that if we, if we can agree on that initial one about state takeover goal. Then we can move on and think about all of those things and how do we put it into an achievement goal? Which would include the pieces with the retention of personnel and then spec, addressing special education.
We have to address.
We have to.
Absolutely. Yes.
One thing at a time.
Yes, so.
Achievement goal.
Let's look at achievement.
Let's do that one.
I had shared with you and, and I'll have these printed out for you too, the, in the strategic plan. How we looked at achievement across the board.
I didn't take it.
No, it's, it's here. No, it's, it's here. We talk about proficiency targets, because the state identifies what those targets are for us all the way through. In fact, they go to 2032 now, they were 2030, but because of COVID, they added two additional years to it. We also talk about multi-tier system of support, and we talk about absenteeism, which is, which is a big deal. So when you're thinking of achievement, how, what do you think?
Kind of like what McDowell had put down for achievement.
Yeah, we can say.
Actually, I like the measures of success better than I like their goal.
Yes.
And it's like ELA math performance, ELA math growth, attendance, discipline, on track to graduation, graduation data, and post-secondary success, all that is what you're supposed to be looking at anyway.
Absolutely, that's all part of that accountability policy.
What is that progress report they put out every year?
Yeah, it's all part of the report card.
Thank you.
I don't like Randolph County's evaluate the progress of student academic achievement and provide appropriate intervention, because who, who determines what's appropriate?
Exactly.
And some other things, so I.
Well, even their action steps for McDowell are pretty good.
Especially for McDowell.
Yeah, we don't, and, and we don't have to go down to that level, but after the establishment of the goals, we certainly could take the time then to determine what do those action steps look like, because we have a lot of those built in already to the strategic plan, so.
Yeah.
I guess I'm not getting my hair cut at three. Okay, but if we take McDowell's, we've got to change it from, from measures of success, we've got to change it into a goal, that's not truly a goal the way it's written.
Well, the goal's written.
The goal's above it, I think, is what they were saying was their goal.
Students will demonstrate.
Academic yield, academic progress.
Improving academic progress.
And decrease.
And shooting gas between subjects.
Yeah.
Well, you don't want something too vague either, you want something that's more measurable.
Measurable, yes.
I remember my graduate class of measurable.
Smart. Well, we need, we definitely have to have a word attendance in their somewhere, because that's one of the ones that's kicking us in the butt.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I believe, I, thank you, I forgot about that one, I mean, I didn't forget, but I didn't write it down.
And this on track to graduation data, we just need to get some people off their butts at the high school, because we were on, we, we had that at one point.
You might want to say something during, during the 2024, 2025 school year, the board will support the superintendent administrators and instructional staff to increase achievement.
Academic progress.
Academic progress, attendance, yes. I'm just throwing, I'm not writing anything down, I'm just throwing words out there to you right now.
Discipline.
Yeah, discipline has to be in there too.
Oh, yeah.
If you did that, and then you put to show growth in all areas, anything we get in attendance that's even one step higher, we can show as a.
Yes.
So for, for that one, we don't have to have a specific goal, so for discipline, for attendance, for achievement, for teacher retention, it can be one goal that comprehensive, okay, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Well, on the example board ones, as far as the transparency number six, that has been an issue in the past, and so I think that's, that's an important one as well.
I don't know if our brains are matching. Throughout the 24, 25 school year, the Board of Education will work to support district and school level administration as well as staff in improving academic progress in math in the LA, discipline and attendance.
Actually, that's, that's, it's not bad.
Pretty good, yeah, say that again, say it again.
I'm sorry, I was reading fast.
Yeah, you were.
I just said throughout the 24 and 25 school year, the Board of Education will work to support district and school level administration as well as staff in improving academic progress in math in the LA, discipline and attendance. And then you can put your action steps below it.
Right.
What you're going to monitor.
Yeah, because you have to do something specific too.
Right.
And so what that does too, is that helps me when I, when I prepare a report out to you.
Right.
Gives me those specific areas that then I can address for you all.
Do you want to add, along with graduation data, didn't we have a deficiency on something about the?
On track to graduate.
On track to graduate.
We did. We did. I don't know what it looks like this year, because like I said, we haven't, they haven't, I think, I don't know if they released stuff to them this next board meeting, or if we have to wait till September, because it's kind of like we're performing an autopsy on results from before, I mean, it really and truly is, we're performing an autopsy at this point.
And I don't want to go too far into it, because it leads to a whole nother conversation, but the rigor is the worry, you know, that we're graduating kids like crazy.
Oh, I know that.
But what is the rigor of what they're learning? We have a lot of kids going to school.
Not prepared.
That don't, you know, they're not successful, and that shouldn't happen.
We've got a lot of students.
So that might be something to think about, put in wording maybe, in a different goal maybe, I don't know, or, or as an action step. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Something like that, I think you could address it to an action step, maybe. I don't know.
When, when we, because the public may be reading these, public may not know what ELA is.
Oh, yeah, I just said that first.
Yeah.
English language arts, I just.
I mean, it's just like.
No, I agree, it'd be written all the way out.
Yeah. It's easy, I get stuck in that acronym stuff, stuff that I'm real familiar with.
So do you like, do you like that goal?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, that could be, then that could be your achievement goal.
And it shows that we're doing, it says an increase, doesn't it?
Yes.
I thought so.
Absolutely, okay.
Says improving academic progress.
Improving, so it is.
And then do you want to use the same, because really the data, we can look at that, but we can.
But I'm not worried about so much the action steps or the measures right now, we've got to do the goal, and then we can, we can break it down to specific things, yes, yes.
Because I really like how they put in professional development and support.
Right.
Because that's, that's part of the whole teacher retention thing.
So, so Susan, this is, when we were going through the pieces of the strategic plan, and I pulled up that specific part, the West Virginia SIP is what they call it, which addresses professional development, there were things in there that it was just like, where'd this come from? And, and I knew that none of that had been gone, been going on, so we rewrote it, and we rewrote the entire portion of the teacher leadership piece, because it was not, nothing was being done.
Right, they just get thrown in and then can't figure out why they're not being successful.
Exactly. So our last big area then is special ed.
Wait a minute, wait a second. Besides the professional development, classroom management also.
Oh, yeah.
That has to be one, because that's, yeah.
There isn't any.
Yeah. Yeah, and special ed.
You ready for what I think Mike?
Yes, yes.
By the end of the 24, 25 school year, the Upsher County Special Ed Department will demonstrate compliance in all identified deficiencies while serving all students with disabilities. I don't know the word on one.
Appropriately.
To, to, to improve.
There you go.
To improve all student learner outcomes.
There you go, there, I like that.
There you go, that can be measured.
I like that.
And measurable outcomes.
Yes.
Good save.
Yes, yes.
That's good.
Because we have to correct those deficiencies.
Yes.
You're not kidding. You're not kidding. Yes, yes.
So by the end of that year, and we have Gia through 2020?
We have her the entire school year.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, so we've got, we can say that that's our, one of our action steps is that we're utilizing.
And that becomes one of Ann's goals for her evaluation this year as well. And then we develop, what we do is we develop then what her action steps and what her monitoring pieces are going to be to determine if she has met that goal or not, which is a far cry from what we were able to do because of the late start of last year. It makes their evaluation much more meaningful, and steps can be taken then if work is not done to accomplish those things.
So did I hit everything?
You hit it.
I'll bet you did, well.
You hit it, so if you just send that this way, we'll.
You want my green card, is that what you just said?
We want your green card, so that.
So you don't have to put anything specific in that, like including training with IEPs or?
No, because those are the deficiencies, those are the deficiencies, they, they've already told us what our deficiencies are. And I'm saying, I'm saying, you can't have any more deficiencies.
Okay, yeah.
You've got to have a hundred percent compliance is basically what it is saying.
Yes, yes.
You can't read that, Tom.
No, I.
I know.
My husband's an retired trooper, I ain't going to read his own, come on, Bill, he writes like a doctor.
That's what the, in most of special ed things, there are, there are a few things on your annual desk audit that you don't have to be at a hundred percent.
Proficient, right, there's fifty, seventy-five, eighty-three.
But, but, but ninety percent of them are, you have to be a hundred percent compliant, so.
Yes, you do.
I think those goals are really good in showing that you're working to support, you know, the students, the staff and the state.
Well, it's a huge step forward that you even sat, you sat down and you did these goals, because they have not been done previously.
Okay, but we did do goals.
Yeah.
We did two days of training upstairs.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
We did two days.
It was ruined.
Who, who was it, boy, who was, what was the lady's name?
Oh, God, I can't picture.
Big pictures, I've got them on my phone.
We went around and had rubbed things down and charts and. Now, if it was ever put together, well, you have to turn something into the state, don't you?
Yeah.
Or you're supposed to.
We did all that work for what, nothing?
But this is a good first, and, and what this also, this also demonstrates that you're, it, this is a step forward. This is one of those steps forward.
Yes.
As a group, you sat here, you came up with these things, and hopefully addressed everyone's concerns. You know, the, the goals are, then they're not broad, they are specific.
They have to be.
We, we have a measurable time period, and then we can figure out how we can go about monitoring them, and what, what inclusive action steps of areas that we want to have under each one of those.
Right.
This is the good first step.
Yes.
And, and, and it does meet the requirement of August the fifteenth. And then, because I, what I'll do is I'll type up all these, and I will send them to them this evening. And then I will ask for inclusion on the agenda for next week, because we're still within the timeframe of development of agenda. So we can, we can add that to the agenda, so that then they become a matter of public record, not just on the website, but then also as we are discussing these things with those that are watching our meetings online.
And once you get that those are accepted by the state, will you give us a heads up that, so that way we can be thinking of action steps?
Yes, yeah, yes.
I know, I took pictures of those big charts, remember those big charts?
Yes, ma'am, I most certainly did, I, I do.
Mr. Parker, are you satisfied with what we've done today?
Yeah, I, just on that first one, you know, overall, what I'd like, some, you know, food service or whatever, specific, more short. You know, what, this is not a goal or anything along those lines, just something I'm, I'm still going to be pushing on our agenda amendments, I think we still have problems in compliance with statute and open meeting requirements. I'll mention the Xerox one more time, you know, to me, that was nowhere close to meeting statute. If Howard Suferr was here, he may convince me, but I think he'd probably be along the lines of what I'm thinking.
Along the regulations, then, we need to do stuff like that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's like the minutes, if someone ten years from now reads those minutes and they see the word Xerox, they'll have no idea what happened. All the other supporting documents in the office may be boxed up, lost, flooded, but the minutes hopefully are permanent, kept forever.
Which I just found a bunch, I just found a bunch of lost ones, supposedly.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
He questioned about us going into executive session with the minutes, whether we had to have the code in the minutes. I've double-checked that, and we do not have to have the code, but we must.
Say why.
We must.
Say.
We must, when, when Sherry put us into executive session, and she said, according to code, blah, 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 for, because that code has a number of choices for it. It has student discipline, it has sale property.
Right, and I think, I think what you all, and what you all will start seeing too, is as I'm working with Elaine, those minutes are, give, give us some, give us another couple meetings, those minutes will be exactly where we need them to be. She's, she's learning, she's, she's picking up on stuff quickly, it, she really and truly is.
The thing about stating the code reference is, when you read the minutes then, if you state West Virginia six-nine, A, A dash two B or whatever, that specifically tells you why you went in there.
Yeah. You're supposed to say that when you go into executive.
Yeah, and if you say it, I think that should be in the minutes, there's no reason it should not be.
The state is saying that it.
There's no reason not to put it in there, though. There's no reason not, if someone a year from now says, you went in there for personnel, well, no, we went in for sale of property, and here's the code reference we did. There's no reason not to put it in the minutes.
I think when you go into executive session, as Sherry says, she said, according to code, West Virginia code, blah, 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 I'm requesting a, an executive session for student discipline. We did that one.
Yeah, and when it's fine, it just.
But that's all you have to say. You don't say specifics, because that's.
You can't say specifics.
I'm not saying specifics on student discipline, what I'm saying is the specific code reference. There's no reason not to put that in the minutes.
And Elaine and I will do, we'll do, because the, the half day before the School Boards Association meeting actually begins, they have their own executive secretary group, so that can be a question too, that she can pose to the other executive secretaries that have been at this a long time, and ask them, how, how do they, how do they place that in their minutes? I can tell you that in Taylor County, we, we did not place it that way, but that doesn't mean that you can't, or that it shouldn't be a consideration, but we'll ask that specific question. Of how do you, how do you all handle it?
Bowles Rice did that last year when I did the president, two years ago, when I did the president's training with Tammy at Stonewall, and they, the way we're doing it is the way Bowles Rice suggests.
Suggests, okay, well, we'll ask.
Again, there's no reason not to do it. I understand, you know, it's like a recipe, my mother-in-law can make things, but there's no reason not to write it down for future generations.
Except that you just don't want to share it.
Well, that's true.
A recipe.
That's true.
Okay, we will get these things typed up, we'll get them sent to the state this afternoon, so, and then we.
Is there one that, did we do one for like the teacher retention and?
We can put that.
I, I just.
We will, we can do that underneath of, of, for action steps under the achievement.
So that's not going to be an actual goal, that's going to be the.
We'll put that as part of an action step.
I just said, like, Upsher County Board of Education will support. I just said like Upshur County Board of Education will support teacher retention by implementing professional development, job coaching, classroom management, and academic instruction and assessment.
Yeah.
Just to.
Yeah, I think that would be like an action step.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks good then.
That's good. Don't lose that.
Do you know when this, this last year's test results will be coming out?
I do not. They have not stated yet and I haven't pushed the envelope like I normally do yet. I, I know, yeah, I, like I said, I know what they are un- unscrubbed.
When you're not supposed to share.
Yeah, I mean, they're, you know, and, uh, yeah, they're still embargoed, so.
It's under embargo.
Yeah.
Have you guys heard anything from the state or Michelle or anybody about, are they in any contact at all with this whole federal thing?
Uh, they know nothing. I've asked. They have heard nothing.
I can call my contact at the Inspector General's office in Pittsburgh.
Well, then do it.
Because he gave me his card. He said, call me. I'm, okay.
They're not going to tell us anything because they've, they've charged.
No, I mean, just a timeline. I don't wanna.
They can say it's still under investigation and I'll be happy.
Yeah, because I've learned this much. Okay, I think Sherry Dean is embezzling money from Jan's Juju beads and I've got her on three counts. They can charge her with that and then as new evidence comes about, we can charge her with four more counts. Can't do that with federal. Federal, it's all one.
Or none.
Or none. So they are going to pick through every toothpick to get everything they can get before they make any charges. And what they've said basically, in my opinion, to us is, we've taken over the investigation. We've charged you with educating the students. Let us do our thing and we'll tell you when we're ready. Is that kind of how you see it?
Probably, yeah.
Yes, at right.
Gone, probably, the way the feds do it.
Definitely, I'm gone. Look at that this year.
It's just kinda funny because I know when I was federal programs here in the county, we did something wrong. They checked everything. You can, you had to turn in a report every year.
Yes, you did.
They looked at your finances every year.
Yes.
I just don't understand how that, they got away with it. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just saying it the way I can say it.
You'll have to forgive me because I can't remember the years that you were the superintendent here.
Up to eighteen.
Okay, so I was, okay, so during that timeframe, that's when I was in the department and school improvement and ESEA. They were together, which they're coming back together.
Right.
We would do, um, desk audits.
Right.
And they sort of putting them on a cyclical process.
Oh, I remember.
Then, when OEPA went away, some of those cyclical processes were changed.
Yeah.
October the eleventh, we do have a federal programs review with the department on October the eleventh. Yes, ma'am.
When's the last time they did one here?
Uh, you know, I'm not aware.
I mean, I used, we used to get them almost every year.
But, but look, like. When we went to the training at Brushy Fork, we had the two people that were doing the COVID funding investigations or reports or monitoring for the whole state.
Yeah.
You can't, yeah.
Two people. So no wonder there were. There were issues. No two humans could do that.
No, and, and there were issues in every county. They just weren't to the level as they rose to in this county.
Well, and it wasn't, I, I get very tired of the news continuing to say the state took over Upshur County due to misuse of COVID funds.
There's more to that.
There was, there was loads more than that.
Yes, that was the tip, only the tip.
That was the tip, yeah.
That was the tip.
Yes.
When it all first came out.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want us to hold on to these?
You can if you want to.
Okay.
If not, you can leave them here. We'll shred them.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I just make one?
Adjourned at three fifteen.
We, we keep blasting the county.
Hey, but that's, but we're still broadcasting, so.
Yeah, so we need to end the broadcast.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's okay.
I didn't know you had to do that.
You made my Sherry Dean and then Roy wage.